Well, welcome everyone back from recess. Hope you enjoyed your lunch. Before we get started, Mr. Merrill, I need to call on the clerk of the board for clarification on the vote.
On item B six, we had announced the vote as five to zero. It was actually six to zero. It was the ELAP, receiving the ELAP report. I just want to put that on the record.
Okay. Now, who's fault was that?
Our fault.
Who's fault?
What?
Whose fault was it? Who made the announcement?
Oh.
Oh.
He's right there.
Ms. Houston. So, I didn't have to, I didn't have to get you. You got yourself. Mr. Merrill.
Excuse me. Yes, Commissioners, so I've been asked by the applicant on B three to defer the item to a future board meeting. So, if you could take that action to defer it.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Smith, to defer B three to a later board meeting. Seeing no discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero. I'm sure.
Wow, he's tough.
Mr. Merrill.
Okay, so that concluded our time certens. So, we move to the regular agenda, beginning with item B one from Aging Services.
You want to be recognized now?
Yes.
Hold on. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Excuse me. I wanted to ask, I had mentioned, that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, if we could, I'm sorry, Tracy. Commissioner Kemp did ask me after we broke that there is an individual here for a presentation of item F two.
F two.
And in consideration of her time, she was here this morning, if the board would be willing to hear her presentation first, so then she can leave, and then we'd go to the other.
They're going to motion away the rules to take up F two. Motion by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kemp to waive the rules to take up F two. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm just, I'd like to introduce, recognize Jody Ray of the University of South Florida Lawton and Ria Child Center for Healthy Mothers and Babies. Jody serves, or Ms. Ray serves as the Program Director of Florida Covering Kids and Family Projects. And right now, we have, facing us, only ten days for people to get enrolled and in, with the Affordable Care Act and the programs that are offered. And so, I asked her to come and make a presentation, so we would be very aware, have this on our agenda, and let the community also be aware of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, and I appreciate the board for allowing me to present. I had some slides. I don't know if they will be visual, okay. So, I am with the University of South Florida College of Public Health, and our entire focus is on connecting individuals to coverage. So, real quick, I just wanted to just sort of give the state of the impact that the uninsured are currently having in our state, in our community. We are looking at the uninsured having four times more likely required avoidable hospitalizations and emergency care. They're thirty percent less likely to receive medical attention for injuries. And there's a far wider community negative effect in terms of, you know, diseases, lack of access to preventive care, immunizations. We're seeing more vaccine preventable diseases coming around again. So, the impact is, do I have the, a way to do that myself? Sorry. Okay. Excellent. Okay. We're also seeing that women who are uninsured have less access to prenatal care. Not all of them can get Medicaid. So, we, the outcome is higher rates of low birth weight infant mortality. So, the impact is significant. I'm gonna skip through this real quick. Sorry. I wanted to just show what our, our coverage opportunities are in Florida right now. We know we have the Affordable Care Act that came into place in 2013. Open enrollment for Marketplace occurred, but we still have a huge hole in terms of who can get coverage in the state. We have the Medicaid and CHIP program that covers kids, some smaller populations of adults. In Florida, that's particularly limited. States did have the opportunity to expand Medicaid. However, Florida did not take up that option, leaving a big hole in terms of who can gain coverage in our state. We have some numbers from the Florida Policy Institute that said the net savings calculated would have been a budgetary savings of about $501 million to the state. So, unfortunately, we're also looking at, the impact of the uninsured has a significant effect on financial stability for individuals in our community. You know, they have less money to spend. If they're spending all their money on covering costs, most of them are making decisions around whether they can fill a prescription or fill a refrigerator. And that's really the reality of the folks that we're seeing. Florida definitely is highly impacted by the lack of expanding Medicaid. We have a lot of rural areas in the state, and unfortunately, in those rural areas, there's very limited health care. They rely on rural hospitals for primary care very often, and a lot of the rural hospitals are seeing high rates of uncompensated care. And unfortunately, it's creating sort of a domino effect, and a lot of them are closing down. Again, just to reiterate that impact that programs like Medicaid and the Marketplace, the Affordable Care Act, and CHIP have on economic security. And you can see here that it's had a significant impact to families across the country as you watch the enrollment grow. Another thing to point out is that we're currently seeing our uninsured rate among children in the state increasing for the first time in several years. This is unfortunate. We had a lot of efforts going on around the state to identify both the uninsured in general and uninsured children, and we're in a situation now where we really don't have resources for that. The state is not really investing in it. They, obviously, at the federal level, they're not investing in it. Some current numbers around the uninsured in Florida, we have almost 2.5 million uninsured of those, 325,000 are children, which puts us at about seventy, 7.3 percent. That number's going up. For Hillsborough County, the uninsured number as a whole is 163,713, with 18,000 of them being kids. And just as an FYI, the number of kids we currently have enrolled in programs like CHIP and Medicaid is over 180,000. CHIP and Medicaid, as you can see here, for Florida, covers almost half the kids in the state. So, it's, it's significant to families, it's significant to, in terms of access to care, well childcare, for those that are sick or need specialists, and being able to access appropriate medications. So, that's where we're at when it comes to coverage in general. A couple of other things that Commissioner Kemp asked me to point out is that we are in the open enrollment period for the Marketplace, for health insurance in general. Obviously, CHIP and Medicaid are open year-round, and we, we continue to need to identify those kids who could be eligible. And quite frankly, the majority of the uninsured kids can enroll in CHIP and Medicaid. We just need, we need the resources. It's not just about marketing either. It's not just about billboards and commercials. We need people on the ground to provide that enrollment assistance. Health insurance is complicated. Navigating these systems is difficult for families. And I can tell you from our experience, and Florida's had the highest enrollment in the country each year during open enrollment for the Marketplace. We have exceeded every goal, but all those resources have been decimated at both the federal and the state level. So, we need help getting the word out. Open enrollment's gonna end on December 15th, and we have a lot of people, including those in this county, that are gonna be left without coverage because they're gonna be unaware that they missed the deadlines. And where to go for help, quite honestly? And, you know, I have a team, USF is the only grantee for Florida now. All the other folks that provide this on the ground level have lost their funding from the Fed. So, we're here. That's our contact information. We're trying to provide as much assistance as we can to as many people as we, I have humans to do that. And we need help. We need help getting the word out. We need to make sure that people across this county know where to get that assistance, so they don't miss the deadline, and they don't end up January 1st without coverage. Because if they don't enroll by the December 15th deadline, they're out for 2019. Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that presentation. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you, Ms. Ray, for your excellent presentation, for the work that you've done for so many years. I really wanted to highlight this to the board, because I think it's so important, important to the, those in Hillsborough County that so desperately could benefit by this, to know that this enrollment deadline is December 15th, especially when the enrollment period has been shrunk, and the resources are not there to let the public know. So, I think this is important. As you heard in the presentation, to the other board members here, you may not know the latest update. After November, many states had referendums to expand Medicaid, and were now down to being one of fourteen states that have not acted on Medicaid expansion. I think you may have mentioned in the presentation, in the state of Florida, we have approximately 2,500,000. I know that that's way up from the figures that I'd heard from years before. And 325,000 children in the state of Florida are not, do not have healthcare, access to healthcare. In Hillsborough County, as you did mention, we have 163,713 people that are uninsured, 18,000, twenty of those are kids. This need is great, and so I'm glad to have you here. I just saw the latest on the figures from the nationwide ranking. Florida, forty-eighth among the fifty states in the District of Columbia, forty-eighth in the lack of access to insurance. It's, it's very shameful. I also say, I just saw a article yesterday that talked about the fact that they can now compare states that have taken advantage of Medicaid expansion to states that have not, and that there are some stark differences, particularly in terms of homelessness and job loss from the lack of access to care. The state of Florida is losing $5 billion, five billion with a B, dollars a year in terms of moving forward money that our taxpayers, that we pay here to the federal government in order to access, or for others in other states, in thirty-six other states to get healthcare that our citizens don't get. With that all being said, I'd like to make a motion to, for us, to add to our legislative agenda to, to the state. The expansion of Medicaid in the state of Florida is part of the, our fiscal, our 2019 legislative agenda for the Hillsborough County BOCC.
Is there a second? There's a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Murman. Commissioner Murman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jody, thanks so much. I know you do great work over there, and appreciate all that you're doing. And I do sit on the Family Healthcare Foundation with Melanie Hall, and they are one of the primary enrollers. But you're right, they don't have enough people out there to really get everybody enrolled. I, I wanted to ask you, do you think because the premiums have increased, that has keeping people from wanting to enroll?
No. And the reason, I can answer that question specifically. As it relates to the kids, obviously, they're not paying more, because it's a fixed, they get subsidized coverage. They're paying anywhere from zero to $20 a month for all the kids in the family. So, that has not changed. That has stayed in the standard. In terms of the Marketplace, for Florida, our rates actually were, had one of the lowest increases this year, and subsidies go up along with the premium cost. So, Florida still has the highest number of people, almost ninety-some percent are enrolling in the Marketplace. And of the, of the people that have enrolled in the Marketplace, over ninety-some percent are getting tax credits and cost sharing. So, they, they won't see that increase in the premiums.
Okay. And just follow-up comment. I think it's, Florida Healthy Kids is a very healthy, you know, plan for kids. And I think it's absolutely awful that we have kids in our state that are not insured when we have that available. I sat on that board. I was very vocal. They decided they didn't want me being vocal anymore, so I didn't, I didn't get to go back. Because I did. I had, somebody has to stand up for the kids that are uninsured. And it's just, when we have a plan, we've got Medicaid, we've got everything available for children. We've even got dental. It just, so if you're doing the legislative agenda thing, make sure you add children in there on the Florida Healthy Kids Plan, because I think it's, I, I think it's, if anything, they should be doing the children.
We need to have community outreach and enrollment assistance. You need to have the people on the ground.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Murman. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you very much for helping us look in the mirror and realize what we are and aren't doing well. And it's very important for all of us to do that where we can. Just a couple of questions on your outreach. Are you using social media as a way, and do you have a flyer that I can send out to every single person I know online sometime today, and then ask everybody I know to share it to? But if that happens, do you have the ability to enroll all the people that show up?
Yes. We are, we are gonna work, we are working long hours, working nights, and we, we're gonna do what it takes. We haven't turned anybody away yet. And I do have that, and we can send it to your office if you would like.
Thank you. Yeah, 'cause I, I haven't seen it. I haven't seen the, the encouragement on social media, and I, from, for someone who benefited enormously in the last eighteen months as a consequence of using social media outreach, it is very powerful. It really is. Everybody has a phone. Even if they don't have much, they have to communicate with the world. And so, frequently, they can use social media as a way of, of learning about something if they have the details on where to find it and who they need to see.
Since we have no marketing resources this year, after the Florida took an eighty-five percent cut in navigator funding, we are only using social media and digital, but you can find all of our information. We have a CoveringFlorida, oh, it's not up there anymore, the CoveringFlorida.org website. We are using Facebook, we're using Twitter, and so, and it's going out daily. It's being pushed out, and press releases, you know, everything we can that doesn't cost money.
Right. Thank you very much.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Commissioner Kemp, is there a nexus with, with children in your motion, or are you just asking that we support Medicaid expansion in general?
I was asking in general. I know that Commissioner Murman just had mentioned specifically the Children's Healthy Kid Program.
I yesterday added to the list.
Right, right. And so, I'd be very minimal to including that, but also.
Okay. Wait a minute.
I made the wrong motion?
Your motion was to?
To, for expansion of Medicaid, to, in the state of Florida, as part of our legislative agenda for the Hillsborough County.
And Commissioner Murman, you seconded it, and then you said what now?
I just want to include children in that. Make sure children are included.
Make it an amendment.
Just want to let you know, Medicaid expansion in Florida for children was a requirement.
Hold on, Ms. Ray. Make that amendment.
Okay. You want me to do an amendment? Okay. So, I'll do an amendment that adds children to your motion.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner White, you still have the floor.
I mean, frankly, I think I'm gonna support the amendment, but not the main motion, you know, because we're not talking about exclusively children here, and, you know, philosophically, I just, you know, I have issues with Medicaid expansion.
Okay. I see no one else in the queue. We have an amendment to the motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
We're now back on the amended motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Murman. I see no one else wanting to queue, wanting to speak. Please record your vote.
Motion carries five to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Okay. Revert back to?
B one.
B one.
Yes. Sorry, Tracy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tracy Gogic Cheyshvili, Director for Department of Aging Services. This item is requesting your approval of a grant award from Senior Connection Center, who is our area agency on aging, for the 2019 Older Americans Act contract in the amount of 3.8 million, and for the Nutrition Services Incentive Program in the amount of 305,000. Grant funding is for services provided from January 1 through December 31, 2019, and services under the OAA grant include adult daycare, home-delivered meals, congregate meals, transportation, and respite. The NSIP grant provides supplemental funding for the cost of the home-delivered and congregate meals. The corresponding budget amendment increases the grant's operating budget by 433,960.
I see no one wanting to speak. It was a pleasure.
Oh, move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Murman to move approval of B one. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Here's a little hazing. We should ask the new members how to spell her last name.
Do what?
How to spell her last name.
She's gonna ask the old members how to spell her last.
Yep.
I looked it up. I'm ready.
But I don't think I could actually say that many letters and not mess it up, so, thank you.
We call her Tracy G. It's easier.
All right.
Item B two, Economic Development.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yaxby Petrovich Economic Development Department. On November 2nd, Byhart Holdings LLC submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the parcel, which is located east of Johns Road and south of West Lye Avenue, Tampa, Florida, 33634, is a brownfield area. The property consists of approximately 19.21 acres, and is shown on the projected map. Florida statutes require public announcement of the community meeting and two public hearings to designate a brownfield. The proposed community meeting is set to be on December 13, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. at AP Alito High School, located on 4409 West Lye Avenue, Tampa, Florida, 33614. The two proposed public hearings are set to be on January 9, 2019, and January 24, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. during the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting in the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners' boardroom on the second floor of Frederick B. Carl County Center, 601 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, 33602. Staff recommendation is to authorize the setting of community meeting and two public hearings as proposed. Staff is also requesting a waiver of statutory requirement that one of the public hearings be held after 5:00 p.m. The advertised community meeting will be held at 6:00 p.m., and the BOCC will be provided with full transcript of public comment at the community meeting.
Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Murman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B two. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Item B four, Head Start.
Good afternoon, Dr. Jenkins.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Welcome to the new Commissioners. My name is Dr. J, Head Start, Early Head Start Department. Here seeking ratification to ratify approval given by the Board Chair for the application of a fiscal year 19 Head Start expansion grant in the little, an amount over 4 million. If we receive this amount, it will expand our early head start services to 300, to over 300 children. So, I can answer any questions for you.
Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve a grant that was so desperately needed, so we can increase our service to the children. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Thank you.
Wait. Do you want to do your staff report?
Motion carries six to zero.
Okay. Yeah, so, we'll let her do G one, which is her monthly staff report.
Motion by Commissioner White to waive the rules, second by Commissioner Murman. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote to waive the rules.
Motion carries six to zero.
G one is seeking approval for our October monthly report. Everything is well, just a couple of highlights year-to-date. We've served 199 children with disabilities. We have over 1,700 on our waitlist, and our attendance rate is 92 percent. I can answer any questions for you.
Move to accept report.
Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White to accept the report. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
I'm gonna have to keep this mic closer to my mouth, so that you hear me. So that I can give a second and a chance.
You gotta be fast around here.
I tell you, you gotta be quick.
Especially if it's the regular agenda and it's late.
Right. Got it.
All right. Item B five, Healthcare Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Gene Early. I'm the Director for Healthcare Services Department. B five requests that you approve the fourth modification to the agreement with Suncoast Community Health Centers, Inc., the fifth modification to the agreement with Tampa Family Health Centers, Inc., the fifth modification to the agreement with St. Joseph's Community Care, Inc., and the sixth modification to the agreement with Floridale Sciences, doing business as Tampa General Hospital, to provide core medical services for Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan patients. These four modifications extend the agreements for a two-year period, commencing July 1, 2019, through and including June 30, 2021, which may be unilaterally renewed by the county through the Healthcare Services Department Director at the same terms and conditions then in effect for three successive one-year periods. An update, the access to records clause per statute, this is an approved non-competitive procurement pursuant to Section 3-20825 of the procurement policy. The aggregate not-to exceed amount for these agreements is $13,149,910, and funding is included in our FY 2019 budget, and there are no additional county funds other than the Intigen Healthcare Plan.
There's a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like I do with all items that directly involve Suncoast Community Health Centers, I'm gonna abstain to avoid a potential conflict of interest. I do practice pharmacy with them on a part-time basis, even though I'm not a decision-maker with the company. Still gonna abstain nevertheless, since they retain me.
Okay. Very good.
And I'll, and I'll pass the legally required abstention form to the clerk.
Right. There's a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B five. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries five to zero. Five to one. Commissioner White abstained.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you, sir.
Item B eight, Library Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Andrew Bradenwald, Director of Library Services. Today, we're asking you to approve the submission to the Florida Department of State, Division of Library and Information Services, the application for state aid for fiscal year 19 under the State Aid to Libraries Law of 1961. The aid for the Hillsborough County Public Library Cooperative is estimated to be $1,037,289, with the actual amount to be determined by the state. Expenditure of local funds for fiscal year 17 are the basis for calculating state aid for fiscal year 19, and no additional county funds are required to receive the state aid. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
There's a motion by Commissioner White, second, second by Commissioner Overman.
I was reading the last one.
Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
We have four procurement items, B nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Good afternoon. It's Gastromark Procurement Services. Item B nine is asking the Board to award a three-year contract to the Humane Society of Tampa Bay in the amount of $450,000 for ongoing and as needed, community animal outreach services for the Pet Resources Department. In this case, there were no disadvantaged business enterprise or small business enterprise firms for the specialized services. firms for the specialized services, therefore, no participation goal or set aside was established. Procurement Services recommends approval.
That's a motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
To approve B9. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Item B10 is asking the Board to award a three-year contract to the Humane Society of Tampa Bay in the amount of $211,500 for ongoing and as-needed feral, community cat, spay, and neuter services for Pet Resources. In this case, again, there were no disadvantaged business or small business enterprise firms for the specialized services, therefore, no participation goal or set aside was established. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B10. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Item B11 is asking the Board to award and execute an agreement with TLC Diversified Incorporated in the amount of $8,769,810 for construction to expand capacity at the South County Advanced Wastewater Treatment Plant. A disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of 10 percent was established. The recommended vendor has committed to achieving a higher goal of 10.9 percent. Procurement Services recommends approval.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner White to approve item B11. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Lastly, item B12 is asking the Board to award and execute a one-year agreement with the overall lowest response responsible bidder, Granger Maintenance and Construction Incorporated in the amount of $3,408,247.60 for the replacement of existing control panels and associated electrical components at approximately 270 wastewater pump stations throughout the county. A disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of 11 percent was established, and the recommended vendor has committed to achieving a higher goal of 16 percent. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Merman to approve item B12. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Very well, thank you.
Mr. Merrill.
B13, Real Estate.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Fast, Assistant County Administrator. Staff is recommending approval of Agenda Item B13, adopting a resolution for the sale of property identified in the Agenda Item to Hunter's Lake Tampa LLC, approval of the Eighth Amendment to the purchase agreement, and a budget amendment to appropriate $20760 of the sale price for additional improvements on behalf of the county. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
That's a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Smith and White. I'm sorry. Motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner Smith to approve item B13. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Item B14 is the Clerk County Audit Report on Sole Source Procurement Process.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Heidi Finley, Director of County Audit. I have Report Number 354, which was an audit of the sole source procurement process. We, the objective of our audit here was to look at the control structure in place for procurements that are awarded through a sole source award. We looked at those on a sample basis, looking at the process and the documentation supporting it, and then we were also able to test 100 percent of the population for fiscal year 17 and 18 for the public notice of those sole source procurement awards. To the credit of Procurement Services, who we worked with throughout the audit, they actually took that step, the audit step, a step further and implemented a second review of the timing of those sole source award postings and reported back to us on their findings as well. All of that is incorporated into the audit report. We had a couple of recommendations to management. They concurred with both of those recommendations and have actually already implemented their corrective action plan, which we have confirmed has addressed our concern. So, I am available for questions or ask that you accept the report.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to accept the report, County Audit Report 354, B14. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Merrill.
C1 is my verbal update on the Transportation Surtax Program. So, immediately following its approval, we, my staff and I focused on three things, all three of which were mentioned by Commissioner Overman this morning. One is the Oversight Committee process, appointment process. The second was developing projects that could immediately be acted on. And the third was coordinating with the other agencies who have to do the same thing that we do. So, the most pressing of those three is the appointment of, or making your appointments to the Oversight Committee. Others have done so, but they had the luxury of having one individual who could do that. This is our first opportunity. So, in talking with you all in briefings, what I thought, what I think I've heard is that the process of selecting those appointees would be the process that Luanne Finley uses because it does seem to work well. However, I did also hear that unlike some of the other appointments you make, that we want to more widely notice this application. So, through our website, through social media, the other normal channels, through our neighborhood associations, any communication portal that we have, which would be an additional step that we usually don't take, but I think in this case, obviously warranted. So, the process that is used by Luanne is one where she would develop, working with probably Christine's folks, an application, an actual physical application that would incorporate all of the criteria that the Charter Amendment requires as to qualifications and so forth. And I think it's probably valuable to bring that actual application back to you so you can see it before it goes out, make sure everything is in there that you're looking for. And then we would put out all of the notices and begin collecting applications. Luanne would then, with, I guess, our support or Christine's support, vet those applications to be sure that if people had to have certifications or whatever that they did, and then begin to winnow down the number of actual bona fide applications for you to look at. The other thing I think I heard from some Commissioners was a desire to interview applicants before they came forward in the process that we, that Luanne conducts in the boardroom. And so, there's obviously two ways to do that. One way is for any Commissioner who wants to interview applicants to do that just one-on-one. The other would be a more formal process where the applicants would be brought here at a board meeting to be interviewed by the entire board. So, that's really up to you as to how you want to do it. Again, that would be a different approach, but that's okay. This is a different kind of situation. So, I would like to ask your direction on how you'd like to do this, and then we can begin putting all the pieces together and bring something back as soon as we can. Probably not the first meeting in January because of the holidays, but second meeting in January.
Well, Mr. Merrill, I think you've outlined the process of how we should do this, which has incorporated part of the process we have now and how we do this. One of the things I did talk to Ms. Finley about is when we advertise in the newspaper that we do not advertise as any conglomerate group of other positions, that this is advertised by itself.
Yes.
And we do have to understand that the press does not have to, the papers do not have to pick these up, but I'm quite sure they'll pick this one up and we do it separately. The other thing is, is other avenues of advertising on our website, in social media, whatever the case may be. And then I think the other one concerned is dealing with the interview process. So, I'm gonna ask Commissioners what their thought process is. There, I see Commissioner Kemp is in the queue. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask for clarification because I know there's four positions, and two of the positions, though, have, unlike any of the other positions, well, I shouldn't say that, but have some specific kinds of requirements in terms of a person's background. Can you just mention that? So, and I just, I'm not sure how this should be derived, but, you know, that we probably would vote on each of those categories separately, I'm thinking, but if you could just mention what those criteria?
Go ahead, sure. No, go ahead.
Either of you.
Yes. The requires four individuals appointed by the Board, and of which two are experts in either transportation or transportation planning, sustainability, engineering, or construction. So...
Thank you. Yes, I just think it's important for people to recognize that and not be taken into account in the process, and says we'll be kind of separate from, not everybody can apply.
That will be in the advertisement.
Right.
It has to be.
Yes. I'm saying, though, when we, and also when we look at the seats, we'll have two kind of open seats, and I just wanted that to be acknowledged and understood. And I appreciate, I was one of the Commissioners who said we need a more robust process and website, and, you know, because there's so much public interest in this, I've been contacted by so many people in advance, and so that, so I appreciate that. As far as, and I had also said about even interviewing people, and, you know, I'm okay with not doing that as a group, just, you know, as contacted, but kind of, it's, this is a little different. I've actually been thinking about some of the more important things that we do appointments to in the past, making a robust process for a few of those. So, maybe if we just put it out there that, so everybody would be informed that they could contact Commissioners. I don't know if people want a different process, but I think it would be okay if, you know, for more or less people to contact us and let us know their interest in, for Commissioners to be, for the public or anybody applying to be aware that that process is happening.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. White, you recognize?
Thank you. I feel comfortable weighing in on this matter because we're not actually taking action today. We're just setting the table for potential future actions. So, I'm not gonna make a motion or anything.
Well, we're gonna take action on the process of the applications there. We're gonna vote on that today.
Correct. But it's a process that would really be implemented the second meeting of January. So, I could cross that bridge at that time with respect to whether or not, you know...
You can cross it at any time you want, but we're gonna, we're gonna vote on the process today.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So, I'll just say I'm not gonna make a motion, but I, you know, I want to hear the rest of the board discussion, but I would agree with Commissioner Kemp that I would be content to just allow the Commissioners the opportunity to interview these candidates one-on-one, should they choose to do so, rather than full, interviews in front of the full board. So, I would just ask that Ms. Finley or someone just make sure that the candidates know to make themselves available for as many as seven individual interviews.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
I don't have too much more to add. I mean, I'm supportive of the process. I do want to ask Christine Beck. I mean, obviously, we've got two things working parallel to each other, the lawsuit and then the process for actually. So, I mean, is the lawsuit, I mean, I'm just asking as a question, is it in an expedited form right now? So, so, I mean, it would be nice to know where everything's headed before we, you know, really exert ourselves into the process.
Ms. Beck, before you answer that, do you feel comfortable answering that question knowing that we have to have outside counsel?
Yeah, so, and I think maybe it would help to explain that really briefly. Because of the obvious conflict with the litigation piece of it, we have retained outside counsel, but I have also consulted with the Florida Bar, and in terms of just advising on what the Charter says, how it can be implemented, all the daily, normal business of this county government, that I'm not prohibited from doing that. And so, the process, I think everybody involved will want to expedite. It's just being, you know, read and reviewed and all of that, but we will certainly try to keep you apprised of any significant development, and I can assure you that, given the nature of this, I think, I think all sides, I think every party would agree that getting a resolution expeditiously is in order.
Okay. That's good. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, we need to really make a motion to put into place the process that we just outlined. So, if you move it, you have everything in place for the motion? A motion by Commissioner Merman?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Overman. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
I think, did Commissioner Kemp make that motion?
Motion carries six to zero.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Kemp.
I mean, it's okay.
I mean, y'all looking at, I mean...
The musical chairs is getting confusing.
So, just so we're clear, it's Kemp and Overman had motion and seconded on that?
Commissioner Kemp. And Overman. Yes. Let me, before we move on, I made some comments this morning concerning the preparation on a report on the steps it takes, is taking to prepare for the implementation of the amendment, and that is with the, inter-local agreements with other parties.
Right.
What's the, what's the process there? Do I need to make a motion for you to bring that back? Tell me what you feel.
Well, I think Christine probably needs to talk about this a little bit, but we had been, again, right from the moment that the tax passed, we've been sort of brainstorming about what's the best way to do this, and in the meantime, Christine has met with the various counsel from the other cities and Hart, just to make sure that everyone is pretty much on the same page, particularly as to how the Oversight Committee should operate. And, and she can tell you the results of those conversations, but I think, and then I also met with Representatives of All for Transportation because I wanted to hear, since they were the drafters of the Charter Amendment, I wanted to hear what their intent was when they drafted the amendment as to the Oversight Committee. And after hearing that and hearing Christine's results, I think everyone is pretty much on the same page that the Oversight Committee's role is to take the plans that we submit after you all have approved it, and the cities and Hart, and make sure that the projects that have been proposed fit within the five categories that are specified in the Charter Amendment, and that that is the extent of their role. And it's not a role where they get to say, "We don't like that project, we like that project." That would wreak havoc on everybody's system of trying to get projects done. So, it was actually suggested by, I think, the All for Transportation representatives that we might want to consider approving some sort of inter-local agreement between Hart, the cities, and the county to memorialize what all of the elected bodies believe are the ground rules, and to do that before the Oversight Committee is seated so they know where you all stand.
Okay.
So, that was the suggestion.
Okay. So, having said that, and getting it on record, I'm gonna pass the gap and make a motion that staff prepare a report on the steps it's taking for the implementation of the amendment, and where we might be in a local agreement with all the other parties, being the cities and Hart, and how long you think it would take to bring that back? I don't want to brush it.
Certainly before the Oversight Committee is appointed, so that's something we could bring back at that second meeting in January, and then you'll have all the issues together. Yes. I think so. I hope so.
Bring it back at a second meeting in January. That's my, that's my motion.
Second.
We have, we have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion? Commissioner White?
To the maker of the motion, you're just simply asking for a staff report at this point. Is that correct?
I'm asking for staff to bring back their steps that they're taking to implement the inter-local agreement that Mr. Merrill just discussed before they go forward in signing an inter-local agreement. I want to know where we are.
Are you asking for draft inter-local agreements?
No, no.
Okay.
Well, if they, if they can come back with a draft inter-local agreement, that's fine.
Yes. Okay. I can support a report and perhaps drafts to look at. I'd be comfortable with that.
Say what?
Given, given the lawsuit, you know, I want to, I want to be, you know, careful about, you know, actions taken, you know, because as I've said, I'm conflicted between Chapter 212 of Florida statutes and this new local law that's embedded within our county charter. So, I'm just, just very carefully weighing, you know, what actions I feel comfortable taking today, but from what I hear, we're just, you know, asking that something be brought to us to take a look at, at a future point in time, i.e. the second meeting in January. So, just explaining... So just explaining, you know, my position and how I'm going to vote.
Conflicted, right?
I am indeed. I, I am indeed.
Okay.
I am indeed, because I believe strongly that this charter amendment conflicts with Chapter 212 of Florida statutes.
I believe strongly that it does not. Commissioner Smith, I'm with Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized?
The only, only thing I wanted to make sure is that, I think the MPO might need to be included in that interlocal agreement, and I didn't hear that, because they get 1% of the tax proceeds. So they should, or at least you should consider that when, in your work to bring us back something.
Glad you asked the question and we should probably talk about it now because we do not believe that they should be parties in your local agreement. The MPO's role, in our estimation, is very, very limited. They are staffed to the Oversight Committee. They do not develop the plans because we are, we, you, we are the ones responsible for delivering the projects. We will be the ones held accountable by constituents and the MPO is, is a planning agency and in the charter, as we read it, their scope is very narrow. And so I would recommend they not be a party to the interlocal, to the decision makers.
So they would, they would receive the funds just to pay for the services of the staff services?
Correct.
Administrator? Okay, thank you.
Because presumably they would have, perhaps have to hire more staff to help staff the Oversight Committee.
Right.
I think that was the idea, but.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure, I'm glad you asked the question.
Commissioner Murman?
Thank you. I, I think, I'm thinking in the same way you are. My experience in, previously being on the CAC for the MPO and then working now on the MPO, which is more interesting, you know, I recognize the learning curve on how transportation works. It's significant. You've got about 15 pieces of puzzle that you've got to put together in order to, to make a transportation plan idea work before it ever comes to see us. And so that, that can be a pretty significant task if part of the MPO's role to support the committee is bringing them up to speed. You know, granted there are experts, but there are also citizens and other, other disciplines that are involved, and I think there is going to be a learning curve on how the county moves forward in its transportation plans and how Hart will move forward in its transportation plan. So while they may not necessarily need to be in the interlocal agreement, I think it's very clear what we need to ask them, we need to know what we're asking them to do, because that's, that's a burden on their, on their department.
Yeah, and if I might suggest, maybe that's something we can explore as we're bringing back these documents on the second meeting, just to, to try to more clearly define the agreement among everybody of what the role of the MPO is. I think there are some options here.
Is there any further discussion? No one else in the queue? Seeing no further discussion, we'll go to a vote on the motion made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Overman. I think that's correct, right?
Motion carries six to zero.
One more.
Yes.
Issue.
Okay.
Did the, did the amendment require that we advertise or put forth on our website any first projects that we may have already put into place?
When you say amendment, I'm not following.
The, I shouldn't say it, the referendum.
Oh, the referendum, yeah. You know, I don't recall that being there, but I, I would think that's probably a likely. I know the MPO's been talking about that and so.
Okay. All right, so I want to make another motion, that we update the county charter on the website to include the new Article 11 and preparing the first agency project plan that we have in place on the website.
We don't have a plan yet, but when we do.
When you do.
We have a motion by Commissioner Miller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Commissioner Murman?
Motion is that the, we update the county charter on the website to include the new Article 11 and preparing the agency's first plan projects, which we don't have yet, but we'll do that when they, when we have.
So can I just ask you a question? So would that be a charter amendment that they would come back? No?
No.
No, he just wants the charter put on the website.
Oh, I see. I got you. Okay.
Also, like, the charter will become part of municide code, but they're a little slower in implementing it into our charter, but they have been put on notice to go ahead and put that as part of municide code.
Okay, got you. I'm sorry, misunderstood.
Commissioner White, you're recognized?
So, so where would plans be listed? The plans that he's referenced?
The plans when they were created? Spot on our website to do that.
On the website. But obviously that would, needless to say, that would not be embedded in the county charter. I mean, obviously.
Oh, no, no.
So that's, would be, would it be alongside, kind of as a reference, you know, on the same page where you view the county charter or?
I think you could have a link to all the information.
You can.
Yeah.
Commissioner Overman?
Commissioner Overman? Thank you. I think what I understand you to say is, you know, all the departments have already been thinking about how to incorporate it in the previous transportation and transit plans that we have already accepted for 19, before we realized this was going to pass. So are you, are you, but many of the departments are asking for an update or, or looking to update their, their plans. Is that what you're referencing to?
I'm not talking about other agencies. I'm talking about us because we're not going to put on our website what Hart's going to do or what City Tampa Plan, City Tampa Terrace is going to do.
Just the county?
Yeah. Just the county.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that's actually a good segue to the last thing that we looked at, which is projects. Do we need to vote on the other?
Well, I, I think we should vote on this motion first. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion as to the motion? Okay, no further discussion. We'll go to a vote.
Motion carries five to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Okay. So as I said, we, we started looking at projects that we could quickly get in front of the Oversight Committee because that's the only way that projects get done, is they go from us to you. You approve it, it goes to the Oversight Committee. So actually to your question, Commissioner Overman, we have in the $800 million program that the board, prior board approved, we have about $75 million in projects that have already been appropriated by the prior board in areas like maintenance, safety and congestion relief. So unless the board decides to change that policy, we're going to keep those projects separate in the $800 million program and we're going to continue working on those through that program. What we have looked at though then is what additional program or projects could we do under the new sales tax? And so far we've come up with about, preliminarily with about $36 million. I'm sure there's more in next year FY19, or actually it's this fiscal year. So that would be at least 36 million that we would be prepared to put in front of the Oversight Committee the moment that they're impaneled. So if that's May or April, we want to be ready to give them those. So those additional projects, total, totaling 36 million, are maintenance for sidewalks, roadways, signal repair, school zone upgrades, traffic signal outages, pedestrian facilities, safe routes to school, intersection improvements, congestion relief for traffic management and roadway corridor improvements. So that's kind of the initial list. There'll be more. So as soon as we can, as soon as we feel comfortable we've got a good list, we'll bring those in front of you, maybe in February, and then you, you can decide what you want to add, take out, so forth. So two sep- two separate lists of projects though at this point.
Great, great.
So that's kind of what we've been doing and appreciate your direction today on the process for the committee.
Thank you.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you. Just a quick question. So where would trails fall in that, like South Coast Greenway? Is that in the 800 million or the new money?
I'll have John answer that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, John Lyons, Infrastructure Services. So the projects that Mike spoke of were primarily ones that we can modify existing contracts or get contracts on the street pretty quickly. Within the five categories within the charter amendment, there is a specific category for pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements, which we characterize as being trail improvements as well. So we'll look to, probably not in FY19, but in future years, really start rolling those projects forward that were previously unfunded.
So not in the 800 million, but the new money?
In the new money. There's a very small amount of money in trails on the 800 million.
And if for some reason the language or the courts did something, that would go back to the 800 million? Probably.
Probably, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. This is a little, I don't know if there's any continuing questions specifically about this, but I thought it was important, if we don't get to, it sounds like we are finishing up here, that we explain to the public a little bit about the conflict in terms of our representation as a county in this lawsuit and what outside counsel we did retain already.
Yes, Commissioner, in a situation such as this where we have a sitting commissioner filing suit in an official capacity with the county as a named defendant, it's a very clear and easy answer under the Florida Bar rules that there is an unwavable conflict and the way you address that is by hiring outside counsel, which we have done. We've selected our outside bond counsel, the firm of Bryant, Miller and Olive, because we already had them under contract, they could be engaged quickly without a procurement and, and they're, you know, well, they understand the county's, you know, taxes and finances and this kind of law. So they would be providing that defense.
Thank you. I just wanted to, and I think that was a very good choice to my, I know I'm the only attorney on the board, but I was, I was pleased to hear that when it was, when that name was put forward.
Okay. Do you have everything in place, Mr. Merrill?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Helpful one?
Okay, next one is C2, which is update on the stadium.
I'm sorry.
You did receive my written update and I briefed you all. So I guess the, sort of the essence of this is that we now, in the last few weeks, have been able to put through, put together a proposed framework of a stadium financing deal. The reason it's only been the last few weeks is because the cornerstone of the framework is what are known as opportunity zones, which is a federally created, it was actually conceived under the Obama administration and the Trump administration actually activated it. And so it's, it's a, it's a very aggressive incentive program to encourage private investment, not public investment, private investors to invest in redevelopment areas like Ebor City around the country. That was important because the charge, the direction that I got, we got from the beginning was to bring back a stadium, a proposed framework for a stadium deal that did not use any new public general fund money. That was a tall order and very challenging, but the opportunity zones sort of changed the landscape and made it possible. But the IRS, Internal Revenue Service, didn't release the final rules on opportunities, opportunity zones until last month, October. So while we had been briefing periodically, actually prior board, or the prior board on discussions with the Rays, the last three months there hasn't been anything to brief about because we were waiting on these rules that were really the heart of putting together a deal that didn't involve any new public money. So, and time was ticking and we knew that there was the December 31st deadline for the Rays, but we couldn't control that if we were waiting on the US Treasury to come up with rules. So what we, we have, again, to just reiterate, we have not, there have been no negotiations with the Rays because there was nothing to negotiate. We've had discussions trying to figure out where they were, what they'd be willing to accept. That has all been verbal discussions. This is the first written proposal, I guess, to the Rays with a framework. And we, I believe, we believe we have done the best that we can to fulfill the charge we had, which is come back with a deal that doesn't involve any new public money. We, we got nothing else after this. This is the best we could do. So we're waiting on the Rays. They received this document last, last Friday. I have not heard from them. We're waiting on them. If they say, sorry, we can't negotiate that framework, then we're, we're done. If they say, yes, we want to negotiate the framework, then they, I assume then they have gotten extent, gotten an extension from the City of St. Pete. If that's the case, we would work hard to bring back to you all, to the commission, city council, Tampa Sports Authority, what's called a term sheet, which is essentially a detailed summary of the entire transaction. It's a fairly, still a fairly lengthy document, but much smaller than the thousands and thousands of pages of documents in the final deal. But the term sheet would be binding. So the term sheet would have to be approved by city council, Tampa Sports Authority, the commission, the Rays and anybody else that's a party. We would, we would want to, we would have to, I would say, get that term sheet approved before Mayor Buckhorn leaves office because the chances of a new mayor taking on this upon entering the office is very unlikely. Mayor Buckhorn has the history, he's been involved. And frankly, if we can't come up with a term sheet that's agreeable by March of next year, we're basically done anyway. So that's the reason why I was able to bring something to you and to the Rays at this point, because now we actually had something tangible to talk about. But I'm not asking for your approval today. I'm not recommending anything. I'm just simply saying here's where we are. The next step is the Rays. But there's still, even if the Rays agree to negotiate, there's still an awful lot of pieces to the puzzle, any one of which could tip the boat over and make the deal undoable. We, our, our outside attorney has contacted private investors who have, have established opportunity funds all over the country since when this program was announced earlier in the year. Since the beginning of this year, private investors have been forming opportunity zone funds in order to be ready for the day that the rules were announced, to begin investing. So investors will be looking at projects all over the country, billions of dollars of investments. So we will be one of those. We will be competing with other redevelopment projects for private money, which makes it even more challenging because then private investors are looking at what's the best return on investment, the lowest risk. But we at least know that there are a couple of opportunity funds that are interested. That gave us enough comfort to be able to put this in writing, but we haven't negotiated a deal with them and that could tip the deal over. So just for the record, even though it's in writing, the framework that I've put forward to the Rays would incorporate the opportunity zone funding because a stadium site is in one of the census tracts that's an opportunity zone. The Rays would have to bear 50% of the initial cost of the land and the construction, but they would have to bear the full cost of any cost overruns above the initial cost. The remaining 50% that's not paid for by the Rays would largely come from private investors, opportunity zone investors. The second source would be landowners in Ebor City who would voluntarily form what you're familiar with as a community development district. They would voluntarily assess themselves, their land. That would be a second source of private dollars. The third source would be the existing community redevelopment areas or CRAs that the City of Tampa formed in 1988 and 2004 in Ebor City. There are two of them, Ebor One and Ebor Two. So the thing I, I need to make clear that I explained to you, but for the public, if, even if there is no stadium, if it never happens, the, the taxes that are collected, the property taxes that are collected in those existing CRAs have to stay in the CRAs. We can't take them and use them to pay for animal services or social services, they stay there. That's why we consider them. That's why we consider them to, to not be new public money or general fund money. And the avail, the availability of that new tax money is solely dependent on growth in development in those two CRAs. So the theory is, and, you know, I guess there's arguments on both sides, that a stadium helps to leverage additional development that wouldn't occur without the stadium, thereby increasing the taxable value and benefiting everyone. But that's, of course, a risk because who knows? The Rays would be required to make annual rent payments in an amount to be determined. Importantly, the Rays would be required to fully fund and maintain reserves for stadium repairs and maintenance. And in addition, they would have to fully fund and maintain reserves for future capital improvements to the stadium. As is the case with the existing three stadiums, Raymond James, Amelie, and Steinbrenner, the stadium would, in order to make the operating side of this deal work, would have to be immune from property tax. That is the one decision that only the county commission can make for immunity. Immunity is unchallengeable. A property tax exemption, which cities can do, is challengeable. But without having the stadium itself, not the development around it, but the stadium itself, without it being immune from property tax, the cash flows on the operating side just don't work. Areas within the stadium that are controlled and owned by the Rays would be taxable, property taxable, just like Raymond James. Inside Raymond James, the Bucks own a team store. They own locker rooms. Those are actually assessed property tax and they pay property tax. But largely, the facility would not pay property tax. The final thing that I mentioned, which is not a certainty, but as we negotiate with the private investors on the opportunity zones, we may be asked, we collectively, the Rays, city and county, may be asked to put up a guarantee should growth in the CRA not occur. We're estimating that guarantee would be less than 50 million and we would insist that it be reimbursable to all of us. So I don't know whether that will be a condition, but I felt I should mention it so that I didn't come back later and you thought I was withholding something or... That's what we know today. That's the guts of the deal. The term sheet will flesh out all the details, but this is the first hurdle. And the, the Rays have a couple, three weeks to tell us. Time is ticking, but as I said, this is the best we can do and we don't have a Plan B. And we've worked hard at the direction of the Pryor Board to do this. This is not something I did on my own account. And this board may feel differently about the project, but I have been faithfully carrying out the direction I was given. And stand for any questions you have.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Well, this, I know a lot more than I used to.
Me too.
Thank you very much for explaining at least what a structure of a, of a project could look like. As we heard this morning, there's mixed response on, on what our role would be involved and, and a lot of concern about using taxpayer monies. There is the prospect of having tax revenues on that specific site is, is now and the potential of property tax revenues that would be significantly more either surrounding it or within the property. But I, and I'm still trying to get my arms around opportunity zones to have a better understanding of the scope of how they are formed and what they are allowed to do. But I think it became really clear while I got here and, and what we heard this morning is that the community in that area is very concerned about gentrification. We are in a dire need of affordable housing. And if a project like this were to go into place and have the appropriate specs of, you know, small businesses, retail environment, transit service requirements, there may be a great deal of jobs that are created. And I'd like to see if that were proposed, that it be of the people that live there and that they benefit the greatest, create jobs, provide opportunity and access to affordable housing. Opportunity zones, from what I understand, do provide some protection to capital gains to the investors. That's a win-win for someone who gets out. But if it's an affordable housing product, what it does is it gentrifies the community in 10 years and makes market rate unaffordable for the people that live there. So if we're able or required to participate in this deal to make it work where the immunity of property taxes is part of that, they're going to need to be some strings attached in order to address the needs of that community, but overall, the needs of overall Hillsborough County because we have some, some needs. It happens to be close to a lot of opportunity for transit, which I would love to see it 100% served by transit. I don't want to build any more parking lots or parking garages. And there is, you know, some access there. So there's possibilities, but I think it's important for us to recognize that we have to take care of the things that we find, I find, when it comes to affordable housing and job and gentrification in, in a historic community as being a priority to address in their project. So, thank you.
Yes, and the one thing that we discussed is that while the city council and mayor are the ones who make virtually all of the decisions because it's in the city zoning, everything, you, as a commission, do hold a very important card, and that is the property tax immunity. Because without that, the deal doesn't work. So that would be a condition in the term sheet and any other conditions like the ones you just stated for affordable housing criteria would go in the term sheet as a condition for your approval to make the stadium immune from taxes. So that would be the opportunity for the entire board to say, "Yeah, we'll help with this, but it's, we got to have this, this, and this." And it's, it's, that's, it's non-negotiable. And so that would bind everyone, including the city as they zone, as they create entitlements, that they would have to do it in consideration of some of the things you mentioned and others that would come up. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Again, for the new commissioners, I, I heard you acknowledge that Commissioner Overman, that, that you've learned so much from this that you didn't know. I also learned much from this that I didn't know. In my first year on the commission, I'd not been briefed for one minute about this. And most of the meetings that were on my calendar for the last year that were regularly scheduled ended up being canceled with no information. So I've gotten, so I was appreciative to see this because it gave me far more information than I've had in my two years. So you're practically, you're, you're right with me here and caught up. Just want to assure you both. But I have several questions because I think it is confusing to the public and unclear some of the, I, I just want to clarify some of the items here as we move forward. And at first, like, because I did ask this also privately, and I think it's important for the public, can, can we please hear exactly what the December 31st deadline is and what it means in terms of the Rays?
Yes, Commissioner. The December 31st deadline is largely, first of all, it's relating to an agreement between the Rays and the City of St. Pete. The county plays no role in that agreement. And essentially what the December 31st deadline is, is that the Rays have to tell them their intentions about wanting to look in or wanting to move to Ebor or wanting to stay where they are or whatever their decision is. But I, I say the caveat that as with any contracts, there is the possibility they could also just negotiate an extension to give them a little more time. So, but we have no knowledge of what is transpiring with regard to that particular contract.
So we can be assured right now that nothing will come to us before December 31st. We wouldn't be asked to any meeting or anything like that?
Correct.
And it, after December 31st, in order for any further action to take place, that it would require some kind of public process in St. Petersburg, I assume, for the extension of the contract?
I believe so. The City of St. Pete board would have to, you know, take action on the contract at some public meeting.
Thank you. And so then, in, in these, after this December 31st, after January 1st, unless there's public action in St. Petersburg, we would no longer be involved in any kind of negotiations, just to make clear?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, because I think that that is not clear to the public and, and really, you know, I, this was a little confusing for me when I first saw the April 30th date. I also think it's important for this board and the public to understand that the attorney that we had originally retained, can you speak Erwin Raj, and we had been using, but that, that situation has changed in just the last two weeks. And so I, you know, had not heard any notice of that except privately when I asked, so.
Yes, my understanding is, I did not participate in the meeting. I've just heard, so I'm presuming this is correct. But my understanding is that the Tampa Sports Authority voted or took action to piggyback on our legal services agreement that we had with the law firm for the attorney. So that, from the transcripts I've read, the TSA was always intended to be the lead, you know, on this. And so that, that makes sense. I don't really have a whole lot more information than that, though.
So at this time, it would be, we would say that we have no outside counsel that's involved in this?
Well, our contract is still alive here, but I wouldn't expect to be receiving any additional billings because I would think he would be working with the TSA.
So, so I look at it and look, you know, I, I would be thinking about more if there wasn't just 26 days in which nothing, you know, right now, we don't expect any other actions to be brought. But I think it would be good, too, for this board to understand, especially the new members of the board, with regards to the arrangement with Commissioner Hagan in terms of any negotiations over the past few years.
So as I said in the report and verbally, there have, there have been no negotiations with anybody because there's been nothing to negotiate. So he asked the board back in 2016?
2014.
14, to be designated as the county's negotiator when and if there were negotiations. But he also said that at that time, that when negotiations took place, it would be through the Tampa Sports Authority, that the mayor of the City of Tampa would be the other party in negotiations and the executive director of the Sports Authority. So the board at that time did take action to designate him in that role should there be negotiations. And so, as I said before, if, you know, if we don't hear from the Rays on the framework in the next two weeks, there's nothing to negotiate and we can all go do other things. So this will resolve itself in the next 20 days anyway, one way or the other. So.
So, um, exactly. And I'm just not, I, I, as you know, never felt comfortable with this arrangement for the members on this board. Never got to weigh in on that arrangement for the members now. And I, I've always felt it should be a arrangement where the administrator was representing us so we could also have information with regards to it. I know that Commissioner Hagan is now the TSA representative from the board. The attorney doing this has been, is now being used at the TSA. And just to ensure that we have availability of all information, I'd, I'd make a motion now to request that from this day forward, that the lead on these negotiations is our county administrator so that we can all have any available information.
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Kemp, you're, you're now saying that you want to remove Commissioner Hagan from his position that we appointed in 2014 and now put Mr. Merrill in that position?
Yes, I want to just have Mr. Merrill be the lead and.
One of the, one of the things that I don't think we would want to happen to any of us is to have something that, that come up and the commissioner's not here. I don't think any of us, including yourself, if you're absent from a meeting and you're doing something for this board, that all of a sudden, while you're gone, the board makes a decision to remove you from that position. I don't think that's fair to any of us in doing that. So I would hope that we do not carry forth this motion. And if you want to bring it back when Commissioner, Commissioner Hagan is here, then we can bring that up. But he's not here to really defend himself and I don't think that's the proper way to do it. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, I had actually written down a note about going to ask about the process of how Commissioner, I, I understood before I got on this board today that Commissioner Hagan was negotiate, was appointed to negotiate on behalf of this board. But then, you know, now I'm, I'm understanding that there's, hasn't been any negotiations yet. So it, it does seem like it would be a good point for those of us who might not, might want to do things differently, to go ahead and do things differently since nothing's been done yet. Having, as I said earlier today, a lot of experience with the ELAB program, I understand how property is generally, real estate deals are generally done in this county by the administrator, not the county commission. So we can keep, we can get informed, but not have a sunshine violation and, and the administrator brings forth stuff. So that seemed to be more typical and normal for this kind of deal and, and I would be wanting to do that if we, you know, I'm, I'm sorry that, that Commissioner Hagan isn't here. And I take, I think your point is well taken, that we could have this discussion when Commissioner Hagan is here if the maker of the motion would entertain that kind of, whatever procedure it takes to, to postpone that.
You recognize?
Thank you. If you would, because I don't think we, it's really going to affect things in the next 26 days, obviously. I do think that, in, you know, I, I understood Commissioner Hagan wasn't here the last time, actually, I raised this. Commissioner Hagan was also not present in 2014, not by design, but by the way that, you know, the sudden announcements came and I had had no information and I raised it at that time. This wasn't done to, done in any way because Commissioner Hagan wasn't here. I just thought it made a time that this could be done. But if there's this discomfort level with doing this, I can just raise it again at the, if, if the board members here don't feel comfortable, I can raise it again in January, should anything, you know, be coming forward in January. But we, we would know about that if St. Petersburg, you know, they would openly have a discussion there.
So are you withdrawing your motion? Are you still going to keep your motion?
Well, I'd just like to hear from some other board members first.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
I, I do agree that it would be a good idea to, to transfer power of decision-making or negotiation source of information. But I don't want something lost in the translation. So while I agree that it would be a wise idea to consider having Mr. Merrill be our center of information for us making decisions going forward, given his knowledge and ability to pull staff resources to help us better understand what is being offered, I think it is also critically important that we, you know, that we make sure that there's not something missing in the fact that we haven't heard maybe all of the story. So I would recommend having it re, re-address your concerns, maybe at the first meeting in January, because then by that time, we'll know whether or not we have anything to talk about.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that reasonable?
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
And as well, I'd, I'd just like to hear if there's anybody else in the queue, if they don't want to address it. But the, just for a point of clarification, so that... But the, just for a point of clarification, so that new members understand, there's no reason that Commissioner Hagan still couldn't continue as to be part of these negotiations. Just simply, my issue was before that, as being lead person, he was barred by sunshine to inform us of anything as fellow commissioners. So, that was my problem. There's no reason that he can't still be, take a role and be as actually intimately involved in negotiations as he was before, or whatever negotiations happened.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Oh, all right. I had some other questions. But, to be clear, we're, Commissioner Hagan's not going to be doing any negotiations until we would come back with this, anyway.
That's correct.
Okay. I have other questions on the numbers involved and the details of the framework here. So, should we postpone that until we dispose of the motion?
Yeah, we'll deal with the motion that's on the floor. So, there's a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Smith, to remove Commissioner Hagan as the appointed negotiator representing the county, and that he replaced by the county administrator. Everyone, Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you. Given, I've listened to all the conversations here, and so I'm going to make a motion to...
I already have a motion on the floor.
Well, a substitute motion, I'm sorry. To lay this on the table and leave pending for the next meeting.
As a motion to lay this on the table and leave it pending to our, did you say something about a date?
Well, by next meeting, we're going to know, so, yeah.
There's a motion by Commissioner Murman, seconded by Commissioner White, to lay this on the table and put a specific date laying on the table to be discussed at our first meeting in January. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I will withdraw my motion, seeing the pleasure of the board at this point.
Hold on. She's going to withdraw her motion. Would you like to withdraw your motion?
Sure.
She's withdrawing her motion, laying on the table. You're withdrawing your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Moving on.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Yes, thank you. So, now, I just want to ask some, I just want to ask some questions about the framework.
Sure.
First of all, if the Rays handle 50%, we, or then the non-Rays portion is 50%. That's roughly $475 million?
About, yeah.
What would the debt service on that be for, say, what would, what would you project, a 20-year, 30-year kind of situation? And what would the debt service be on that annually?
I'm not sure yet, because we don't know how much is coming from each of the three sources. So, for example, if the private investors in the opportunity zone put up the full $475,
Right.
Then there's no debt service.
Yes.
The debt service would only come into play for the portion that's funded with the CRA. And we want to minimize that as much as possible. So, as much of the $475 that we can lay off on the private side, both the CDD and the opportunity zone, is the best solution, because if we can avoid debt service, that's a good thing, because then you're not paying interest and consuming cash, so.
Yes.
So, I don't really know yet, but.
Thank you, I understand. And, the rent payments that they would pay, that's to the sports authority, not to us, the county?
Yes, right. They would pay it to the sports authority, which would really be a pass-through to defray any cost of the deal. So, it wouldn't just go to the TSA for their discretion as to how to spend it. It would be specified in the documents that the rent would be used for this, for these expenditures, which would have to be approved by the commission and by the city council and by the sports authority. So, it's a revenue that gets bundled with all the other revenues to help pay the cost of the operation of the facility.
Oh, okay. So, they're kind of just paying rent to themselves?
Could be. It could, I don't, but again, I don't know, because we haven't negotiated it. But, so, I can answer it this way, though. I think this is what you're asking. Looking out for our interest, I would want the rent to go to first pay any costs that could be public costs, even if it's cost of the CRA. So, let's say, for example, going back to your prior question, let's suppose there is debt service on bonds issued by the CRA. I'd want the rent that's paid by the Rays to first go to pay that debt service. So, that would be an example of how, that would be my objective in protecting our interests. Because the Rays will get all kinds of revenue from operating the stadium. They'll get naming rights, they'll get advertising, they'll get all kinds of stuff that can go to pay for the operation of the facility. That's how the Amalie Arena deal is structured. So, the Lightning keep all the revenue, but they also pay all the expenses, operating expenses, which is a nice, clean way to do it. So, they don't pay rent, per se. But.
And my last question, I think, is, well, a couple of questions. The immunity from property taxes, what is that, that we would be losing? What ballpark amount would we be losing there?
So, assuming it's a, it's a $850 million or so building,
Yeah.
plus land, it's about $20, $23 million in property taxes that we wouldn't get anyway, because if the stadium weren't there, we wouldn't be getting the property tax from the stadium. We'd be getting property tax from something else, but.
Right. Okay. And then, my, the last question is, if, so if we seem to be, as a board, okay with you discussing this framework to the Rays, does that mean we've taken a step towards the eventual agreement of this board to grant this immunity? I mean, wouldn't that be their kind of expectation? Is that they've, we've congenially said, take this to them, it's?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the next step, then, would be to, to start talking about a term sheet. And one of the items in the term sheet, by virtue of it being in the framework, would be immunity from property tax, in addition to other things that you all might want to add. But yes, it would.
I haven't personally decided that I'm comfortable with giving up the property taxes or anything that is money that would come to the county, just for information.
Yeah. And the only reason that I've got it included is because we know, so, there's a lot of things we don't know, but our financial advisor has been running different scenarios and financial models with our outside counsel as this framework has been put together. And the one thing we do know on the operating side is that if property taxes have to be paid, the cash flows just don't work, and that's...
They can't afford $23 million a year
In the deal, right.
to do this, yeah.
Yeah, so, which is normally the case. So, it's the quid pro quo, really, for saying, so, I mentioned in the report, we had a steep climb to make this a private deal, because you look at the Marlins, with 70% true public subsidy. Texas Rangers, 50% true public subsidy. So, we have, this is a, this is a deal that's never been done before, ever, on stadium. And, so, we're laying off the cost and the risk onto the private sector across the board. And in exchange for that, they need something to help make the deal work. And that has been the case with all of the other sports facilities. And so, that's why it's there.
I really do have to say, I appreciate all these pieces of the puzzle that you have put together that do not entail county resources going into this. You've done a great job on trying to find every last way and bit of putting together the funding without taking tax money, which we know is not a step that the people here want to go in. So, thank you.
And thank you, and we can thank the Obama administration for coming up with opportunity zones, because without that, I wouldn't even be here talking about it today. It never would have worked, so.
Our last speaker on this issue is Commissioner Oberman.
Absolutely, with the last. I would appreciate if staff could provide us with some reference points on how opportunity zones work. And then, to your, to answer your questions, given that the thing that we would be giving up, even though it's now nothing to give up, of significant value, is the property tax, that's why I was investigating whether or not there are opportunities for us to address not having those resources, but having those resources to invest in the community in terms of, you know, strings attached in purposes of the use of foregoing those resources, having the investors actually invest in the things that we would use that money for.
Yeah.
So, that was why I was sort of signaling that that would be a great way of making this deal work, if we were able to put something together. So, thank you very much for your work. Thank you.
Mr. Merrill?
All right, then we go to F1, which is Commissioner Kemp's item.
Thank you.
Before we get to your item, Commissioner Kemp, I think I'm going to ask the county attorney of this. Your item says to rescind the board's 2008, 2000, I'm sorry, November 2008 decision to terminate the contract. Do we have to vote? I think we have to vote first to rescind that, or?
I guess that would actually be the motion to rescind the board action. So, I think that's what shall actually be presented.
That's what I thought, okay. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. As you know, I'm seeking to rescind the board's action of November 8th, canceling the contract with HMS and Southswell related to the McDill commuter ferry project. And as we've established, rescissions are allowable under Rule 11. And they may be made regardless of how a commissioner voted. The county, Southswell, and HMS ferries have been working on this project since 2014. Under the terms, and this is some background for, especially, the public and the new commissioners, under the terms of an interim, on this project in 2014, under the terms of an interim agreement that has been extended and amended several times. The McDill Ferry Project has faced challenges, primarily because of questions about where a ferry terminal in South Hillsborough County may be sited. This year, for the first time, progress has been made to answer the, some of these questions. One, the county retained AECom as an owner's representative to assist the county in working with HMS and Southswell to answer these and other technical questions related to the feasibility of a ferry project. And I believe that Bill Ferring, Mr. Ferring from AECom is here. And I just have to say, he has been doing a wonderful job, in my estimation. Most recently, AECom recommended that the county enter into an eighth modification of the interim agreement. The eighth modification provided for specifically progress management, project management tasks, including site connectivity, coordination with HART and McDill Air Force Base, market and ridership surveys and projections, preliminary planning and conceptual design, regulatory consultation and environmental evaluation, evaluation of proposed or of potential off-site impacts and benefits, and preliminary and proposed business plan development to be furnished by HMS and Southswell as part of the ongoing due diligence activities and overall investigation of the ferry project. The eighth modification provides a short timeline, or did, to complete six tasks with deliverables for a fixed fee, and provides for progress, and did provide for progress payments, representing a quarter of the fixed fee to be made on a monthly basis for four months, with deliverables to come at the end of the fourth term. This board approved, by a seven-to-zero vote, the eighth modification of this contract on September 30th, 2018. In less than two months, the first two months of this contract that was worked on, this step was taken to finally resolve lingering questions about the feasibility of this project that have been out there since 2014. Again, this, then, an update, even though we had no information, since this had been pretty much fast-tracked, an update was scheduled for November 8th. Mr. Ferring reported at that time that good progress was being made on the project management tasks. But after Mr. Ferring's update, members of the board discussed frustrations and difficulties that we encountered, and longstanding questions related to the project, including citing the South Hillsborough Ferry Terminal and this board, or the board that was here at that time, canceled this contract when there was only two months of the contract that had been done and two months to go. At that time, the board did not consider the investment the county already made toward completing the project management task. The board also did not consider the fact that canceling the contract before the term was up and the deliverables were due would leave unfinished work. Because the board terminated the contract halfway into the process and two months before the tasks were scheduled to be completed, only incomplete and inconclusive information about the feasibility of the ferry service is available, essentially for us wasting hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars. As long as Southswell and HMS ferries are willing to reinstate the contract, and I believe they are, rescinding the board's action would allow the project management task to be completed. Completing the task would provide the county with valuable information. We would get the asset that we paid for, needed to evaluate the feasibility of the ferry service. And it would also allow the county to obtain the benefits of these funds already invested and efforts already underway to understand our potential in this project. In September, the board approved, seven-to-zero, for Mr. Ferring. We made a way forward. I believe that we should, at least, at very least, complete this effort and give the taxpayer the value of the time and money already invested. We heard from several people this morning with regards to that. We've gotten emails with regards to that. Importantly, we heard from the Tampa Chamber of Commerce, I'm pleased that they were here this morning, with two different leaders, talking about how important this is. I will tell you that the, I could read their letters here, but these are, again, asking for a rescission of this decision. I'd like to say that months and months ago, the Tampa Chamber of Commerce did come to visit me in my office. And they said that they had been down at McDill Air Force Base, and they were, they asked McDill representatives, what can we do, what is the number? Give us what you need from us to do to make, to help McDill. And the number one cited project by the McDill Ferry leadership to the Tampa Chamber was, get this ferry going. So, and again, this is what, I thank the Greater Tampa Chamber of Commerce for coming down. But I think we've heard that this is an important, that we need to just finish this up. It's just a few months, and it's time to rescind this. So, with that, I'll move that the board rescind the November 8th, 2018 decision to terminate the contract with Southswell and HMS ferries in order to reinstate the agreement for the limited purpose of completing the project management task laid out in the eighth modification to the Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry Interim Private Partnership Agreement to investigate and determine the feasibility of a passenger ferry system between South Hillsborough County, McDill Air Force Base, and downtown Tampa.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Oberman, to rescind the board's vote on November 8th, 2018. We have some members in the queue. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, I'm going to support your motion as a matter of process. There's a perception by some that a lame-duck board took action, and that the other party didn't receive a fair hearing. That certainly was not my intent. That certainly was not my intent, and we did have an agenda item scheduled at that meeting. Nevertheless, we have two new commissioners seated here today, and I want to be sure beyond a shadow of a doubt that the other party is treated fairly. In reiterating that this is about process, I feel compelled to say that I still do not support the Schultz Preserve as the site, and that the study results are unlikely to change my mind. I'll confirm with staff, either the county administrator or the county attorney's staff, that regardless of what the study results might show, this board is not obligated in any, any way, shape, or form to select any one site over another, should we choose to move forward, correct?
That's correct, Commissioner. This would reinstate the entire agreement, and there are still another, a number of conditions proceeding that would have to be tackled down the road.
Okay. And I'd like to make an amendment to your motion, Commissioner Kemp, and I'd ask you to listen to me carefully. I would, I would like to make a motion to amend, to also stipulate that Forrest Turberville continue with his work on the capital improvement project as prescribed at our last meeting in the event that the Schultz Preserve is not selected as the site ultimately for a ferry terminus.
Is there a second?
Oh, sec, well, second, but that, technically, that was really my project I've been working on forever on the site, so, yeah, it's in my district, and definitely, I'd second it.
Okay, Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Oh, yes, I'm a new commissioner, but I am not new to the ferry project. I spoke at the first rollout meeting representing South Hillsborough residents who were in support of the ferry project at the Ice, what was then, I think, the Ice Palace? That was five years ago, and I've talked to community groups and people all through those years and about the ferry project and all along the campaign trail. And I can just tell you, it's very, very popular with many citizens and many groups of citizens, and I think people were, as far as your point of the process, Commissioner White, I think people were taken off guard, I know I was, to find that there was this item for a routine report on the status, and the report itself, backup material, just showed that another report was forthcoming, and then find that, whoops, the whole project is being killed at that point. So, I think it was, it was very surprising, and it's, to my mind, really appropriate to take that back to where it was, where people can work through the process. The reports will be coming very soon, and we can go from there. I would just like to mention while we're on the topic that there are a lot of people in South Hillsborough where I live who are counting on that McDill run, not just the 8,000 McDill employees who live in South Hillsborough, but who are certainly very important commuters in our, in our transportation plan to consider that would use the ferry. But there's an awful lot of people in retired military in Sun City Center and in South County who are anxiously awaiting this ferry to take them to the commissary and the exchange and to do the pharmacy there on the base and to do other kinds of errands for, that retired military do. So, it's a, it's a transportation project that is eagerly awaited by a lot of people, not to mention the fact that it's the McDill Ferry Project that really stands up financially the whole ferry system. Without the McDill piece, we don't, the rest of the Cross Bay Ferry Weekend Service and from St. Pete to Tampa, that is not as I understand it going to be, as economically feasible as if we can support that with the McDill Ferry. So, that's the cornerstone, the keystone of an operating fast ferry transit system in Tampa Bay. So, I think it's important to continue trying to move forward with that. Thanks.
Commissioner Merrill, you're recognized.
Thank you. You know, this has been an interesting process with the ferry for me for quite some time. I was the one that actually, I mean, it was with HMS and their consultant, and we had this idea and we moved it forward. And no one has supported this ferry more than I have, no one. And the past couple of weeks, I have been literally attacked as someone that's not supporting the ferry. But I think it, and I'll support the motion today, but I want to tell you honestly, because I look at facts when I make decisions on this board. The letter from SwifMud really took me by surprise, and it was not brought up at our last meeting, but they want $12.5 million for Schultz. And then they want another piece of property given to them worth another $12.5 million. So, basically, we're $25 million in without doing anything. And I'm trying to look for the light at the end of the tunnel on this project. We haven't gotten a letter from Department of Defense yet, and they're still going to require a NEPA study. That has not been done yet, and that's two years. So, I'm trying to, you know, I have participated in many conversations with our owner's rep, and, you know, I think we have to get over these challenges. They are big challenges moving forward. I want the ferry more than anything, but I just don't, I don't know where we're going to be able to put it. I asked a big group in Ruskin about a month ago, which would you rather keep, an environmentally sensitive property or have the ferry and put parking lot and terminal and all that? They wanted preserved. I was shocked. And I know there's a lot of service people there. I know the best place for this would probably be at Williams, and that's not going to happen because it's got burial ground, it's got a whole host of issues. So, I'm not seeing a good light at the end of the tunnel for this, but if we want to finish the study, get the information, make a good, sound, factual decision that doesn't cost us an arm and a leg, it costs, to build Big Bend and the interchange, it's going to cost about 70, almost $75 million. And I see the ferry project coming pretty close to almost $45, $50 million, honestly. If you add up the price, we got to pay for the property, all the road improvements we have to make. I just want to deal with facts. I want to understand how we're going to get there, because it is, for me, I have a fiduciary responsibility on the board. So, I'll support today, let's finish the study, and then we'll be back here and make it. But this, I'm telling all of you, and Commissioner Miller and Commissioner White, you've been here since the beginning when the ferry came up, and it's, it's a project I'd love to pieces, but it's got to work. So, you know, that's where we're at. And I wanted to work for my constituents, for the people of District 1, more than anybody, but it's got to work fiscally and logically, because I understand Commissioner White with his issues on Schultz. I want to park there no matter what. I've said that from the beginning, but it may not work for a terminal. And with all the trucks coming in, all the new development they have happening with the port, all the new, you know, the flower mill people are actually going to be moving down there. I mean, you think of all that truck traffic mixed in with 1,500 cars, I mean, that's another logistic issue, and you all need to be aware of this. It's not saying we don't want it, because we do. We got to figure out how to make it work, and it may not be the way we've been working on for quite some time. So, that's my final words. Thank you very much for your patience.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. Commissioner Merrill, and I get it, I totally get it. It's, it's a challenging program, it's got all kinds of gnarly corners, but it also is something that would be terrific for this community, and we maybe haven't thought of everything, so, but I do find the value of actually owning the decision to put the study together and to finish the job and to make sure that we're not having to start over again with another study that, because we didn't finish this one. So, I'm happy to see that this has been brought forward. My only question about if we were to rescind and reinstate, given that there's now been a 30-day lag from when they, you know, when they might have been working on it for a January delivery, is it January 15, 2019? Because it says 18 in the minutes. Are they going to need a month more to be able to come up with the report? Because they basically have had their hands tied for 30 days.
While you're in the queue, Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd just like to respond to that. I do have a second motion with regards to that. I have talked to Mr. Ferring. As you know, the holidays are here. They had lots of appointments set up that had to be set up 30 days in advance. They had a survey of 10,000 people at the base that was cut off in the middle by this not taking further action. So, there, I talked to Mr. Ferring about what it would take to complete this project, and I have a second motion. Should this be approved? A second motion to?
Let's get rid of this first motion.
Okay, to address that issue.
Okay, no one else in the queue. We have an amendment to the motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Merrill. Seeing any further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
We're now on the amended motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Overman. Seeing anyone else in the queue, please record your vote.
Motion carried five to one. Commissioner Miller voted no.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you. As I stated, because the contract was canceled, on November 14th, meetings were canceled, the work on the project didn't continue. We have the holidays coming up. Mr. Ferring said that he did need extra time to complete and give us the deliverables, and said that an additional 60 days would be an appropriate amount of time for the contract to be delivered. So, I'll make a motion to that effect to allow for an additional 60 days.
A motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried five to one. Commissioner Miller voted no.
Always consistent. Mr. Merrill.
Okay. That leaves your item, Commissioner Miller, F4.
Thank you. I'll be brief because I'm sitting here in a little pain. Not that kind of pain. This is a amendment to our B.O.C.C. Policy Section Number 01.23.00.00. I just felt that we had an issue, we had something come up a couple of months ago, I can't remember exactly what it was, that we gave some accommodation proclamations to candidates. They had done work, but they were candidates for office, and I just think that was inappropriate to do that. So, this, what I'm bringing forth now is I'm making a motion that the board should not present a proclamation or accommodation to any candidate defined in Section 97.021, Par. 6 Florida Statute, as a candidate means any person to whom anyone or more of the following applies. Any person who seeks to qualify for nomination or election by means of petitioning and process, any person who seeks to qualify for election as a writing candidate, any person who receives contributions to make expenditures or give his or her consent for other persons to receive contributions or make expenditures with a view to bring about his or her nomination or election to or retain in public office, any person who appoints a treasurer and designates a primary depository, any person who files qualified qualification papers and subscribes to a candidate oath as required by law. That's my motion. I just don't think that we should not be making, giving a proclamation or accommodations to a person that's running for office. I think that's just inappropriate. Now, if a person comes in here, they're elected official, and they're not on the ballot, and they've done something for us in Tallahassee, Washington DC, that's a horse of a different color. But they're coming here, and they're a candidate, and they're on the ballot, I just think that's inappropriate. So, that's my motion.
Second.
Sorry. Commissioner Smith.
We've had a motion, a second. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, this makes a lot of sense to me. Just a point of clarification, maybe to get on the record, is what happens if a candidate is a member of a group that's getting a commendation? You know, the whole group is here sometimes getting a commendation, and one of them is a candidate.
I don't think we have a problem with the group getting, if they're part of a group getting a commendation, I don't think that that person needs to come forth to be receiving a commendation or making a speech on the commendation. If they're part of a group, that's fine, but to bring an individual in and give them a commendation proclamation, I think is absolutely wrong.
Just clarifying, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Oh, Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller, I have no issue whatsoever with supporting this, but, you know, you had mentioned that sometimes a sitting elected official, you know, will do something, you know, on behalf of this board or for this board, and we want to recognize them. And, you know, I just think of, you know, members of Congress, state representatives that are on the ballot every two years, you know, they're probably a candidate, you know, 50% of their time in office. So, I will ask the county attorney, if this board were in agreement that a sitting elected official should be recognized, that it might just so happen to be a candidate for reelection, again, this would be with board agreement, we've all reached consensus, we could always make a motion to waive the rules and recognize that person, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's it? No one else in the queue? Okay, and I would just like to make my own statement, and I agree wholeheartedly, and I appreciate that being brought forward because I felt as though that wasn't appropriate at the time. So, that being said, no one else, no more discussion?
Who had the second on the motion? I'm sorry.
I believe I, yes.
I don't know. Both of them.
Okay, I'm sorry. Discussion with, no, no more discussion, we'll go to the other.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill.
That leaves only the two items removed from consent for discussion. First is 826. That was removed by Commissioner Kemp.
Which one is that? I couldn't hear you, Mr. Merrill.
826 is the item pertaining to consulting services for the fee study for the Planning Commission.
Commissioner Kemp, you pulled that item.
Yes, I did. Yes. I had concerns about this. I saw that it was for a study with regards to the comprehensive plan and plan fees, which I had, have raised here several times, and I just saw it on the consent agenda. So, I just wanted to understand more about this being put forward on the consent agenda and what this is.
It is.
Somebody, anybody, it's getting late.
Yeah, following the board's action in October, directing us to bring back a consultant to have another look at the 2016 fee study that was done, but also incorporate the fee study that relates to development services. So, this was simply bringing back a board direction, that's why it's on consent, so.
And I was intending to bring back the study that had already been done prior, but I was concerned about any further delays that this would cost to the process, since we haven't done any fee increases since 1987 when Ronald Reagan was president. I was, I'd like to know when this would be completed and when the board would have information.
Ms. Garsas, good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lucia Garsas, Chief of Development and Infrastructure, in, consistent with the action that this board took, the previous board took in October, and the follow-on was to work with a consultant to ensure that the planning commission fees would be brought back as part of the budget process. So, what we have done is, in the interim, the development- the Development Services Department review fees, so not the mobility fees, not school impact fees, but the development application fees have been reviewed, and I think Adam attached that information to your backup as supplemental information you received yesterday with an email. And so what we are doing is, we're engaging the same consultant to bring back and take a look at the work that was done with the planning commission fees, refresh them, because there are very similar kinds of processes that are happening in the works. We review plan amendments, planning commission reviews, rezonings. So it's just to have kind of an apples-and-apples comparison as we move forward. And so it is intended to be completed in time, I think by March, so it can be included in your budget. Both of the plan review fees, both the planning commission and the development services fees, it will also give time then for Melissa Zornita to bring it to her planning commission for review as well. The report that has been included in your backup wasn't reviewed by the planning commission, and so I think she desired an opportunity to do that as well. So they'll be traveling together, there'll be baskets of apples, and they will be included as part of your budget discussion.
Hearing that, I'd like to just have assurances, and it sounds like I have them, but I'd like to include in this that we would have this presented to the board by March, within the month of March 2019, as a deadline.
I think that is consistent with the consultant's timeline, and so we will have that back for you in the March timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Move the item?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Kemp, to move item 826. Seeing any further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
And item 825, removed by Commissioner Overman.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. As I mentioned earlier, I'm drinking from the fire hose. And I read through this item, and I was like, how, why would we be removing an elected on a status of woman commission that was established by this board? At least, that was my understanding. And apparently, this commission was established by, then at the time, Commissioners Platt and Frank. And I did not know whether or not, what the process was for making the recommendations. That was what I was just not clear about.
Let me explain what's going on there. My appointee to the board, Miss Diane Hart, was elected to the Board of House Representatives, and as elected official, we felt that she could not serve on the board.
Okay.
So, but basically what they're saying is that, I think that's what they're saying, I don't, that they're approving, increasing new appointment seat by the Hillborough County... I'm on the wrong board. Let me shut up.
Okay. I think it was Commissioner Murman's issue.
Okay. The commissioner on status of women actually came to me and asked me that they not have elected officials on their board.
That's the same thing, was that what I was saying?
Yes, exactly.
And the reasoning, was it against the bylaws or something? I just didn't, I didn't understand what the purpose was.
I, you know, I don't, I didn't, you know, their board requested this of us. So you'll have to get your appointee involved. And I think they want to keep this very apolitical. They do a lot of good work in the community for kids and human trafficking and a lot of different issues. And I don't think they want politicians on their grandstanding and using that commission to advance their careers.
So I was right. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Yeah, just to reiterate what Commissioner Murman stated, commissioner on status of women wants this. We're not imposing it upon them. This is something they've requested.
Thank you. Just for a point of clarification, I was like, wait, this commission actually created it, is from what I understood, and yet we have no representation on it. So that's what, why I was like, hmm.
Yes, we do. Each one of us appoint somebody to be on it.
Okay, that was where I was not clear.
Yeah, you'll be making your appointment. Louanne should be coming by your office shortly to get your representative.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much for clarification.
Move the item?
Move the item, please.
Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Overman, to approve 825. Seeing any further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
And all that remains are any future discussion items, if any.
Commissioner Murman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is...
Go ahead.
Sure? Okay. This is, I'd like to ask staff to, our economic development staff, to work on a grant, the Economic Development Administration, Lindsay Kimball is here, and she's very aware of it. They have a, in 2018, it's called EDA, Economic Development Administration's Disaster Supplemental, that they were accepting applications for $587 million in funds that are available. The purpose of the grant is to help communities and regions devise and implement long-term economic recovery strategies through a variety of non-construction construction projects as appropriate to address economic challenges in areas where a presidential declaration of a major disaster was issued under the Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. So anybody that was declared a disaster area as a result of Hurricane Harvey, Irma, Maria, and of any wildfire and other natural disasters that occurred in the calendar year 2017. Staff has had introductory conversations with them. They are very encouraging of an expanded entrepreneurial collaborative center, which is a concept that I brought forth and to this board many years ago, and has been wildly successful. But we hope it will serve as an even larger asset to the community and meet our demands for entrepreneurial and small business assistance. So this really fits their grant. They have been very encouraging that we apply for it. So I'd like to ask Mr. Merrill to direct staff to start working on the grant. So that's basically future issue.
Any other future issues? Yes, sir.
Okay. I just need to clarify another vote. On B5, it was five to zero with Commissioner White in standing.
It wasn't five to one.
It wasn't five to one.
We have to revert back to public comment. I do have to call the names. So we'll see what's going on. Still on the agenda item, Cara Lee. Off the agenda items, Jim Chastain, David McAllister, Bill Barrett, Connor Darkin, Scott Levinson, Tony Daniels. None of them are here. We adjourn. Oh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays.
We only have one meaning.
I've got something going on in my bag here.